I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please? Belsley.
Here.
Dobbs.
Here.
Hare.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Kaufman.
Here.
Newhouse.
Here.
You have a quorum. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearings today, however, we do have a special presentation by Chief Hilliard.
Thank you. If you would step up to the podium with me. It's a full house tonight. It's with honor tonight that I stand before you along with a little sadness. One of our officers retired as of yesterday. He's been on the department for over 30 years. I've had the privilege to work 29 of those 30 years with him. In 1984, Pat McMiniman was hired as a police officer by PRA Heights PD. There he worked for some four months. And during the time, he went to the police academy down in Champaign-Urbana, he earned a couple of awards. One was the scholarship award for having the highest cumulative GPA, as well as the Urban H Warren Award. And that's award voted on by your peers, given to the officer which they believe best exemplifies the modern law enforcement officer. On January 2nd of 1985, Patrick was hired by the Morton Police Department. In 87, he got certified as a youth officer or juvenile officer where he served until his retirement. In 1987, he was honored by the Fraternal Order of Police for an investigation that he ran. In 1988, he was one of the first two DARE officers certified by the Morton Police Department along with trustee Dobbs. In 1983, DARE was established in Los Angeles by former police chief Darrell Gates. And in 86, it came to the Illinois schools supplied by the Illinois State Police as the trainers. In 1989, Patrick along with Tom brought it into the Morton schools as Morton police officers teaching it. In 1990, Patrick launched the largest bicycle rodeo in the state of Illinois and was honored by the American Legion as the Tazewell County Police Officer, Municipal Police Officer of the Year in 1991 for his efforts. This bike rodeo still goes today, and we had our most recent one this last Saturday. In 1991, Patrick was also honored as the Tazewell County Substance Abuse Partner of the Year for his efforts in the DARE program. In 96, he received a meritorious service award for an incident that happened June of 1995. At that time, the Comfort Inn was being built. A high winds collapsed the roof onto the foundation. Patrick crawled through the rubble and found an individual that was entrapped in there and stayed with him until which time they were cut out and rescued. In 1999, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant. And in 2000, he received an award by the Allegiance Against Intoxicated Motors for his DUI enforcement efforts. He served with the department not just as a juvenile officer, but also as a field training officer, and for over 10 years as a field training sergeant. And most importantly, for many of the past officers, he served as the president for the pension board from 1987 till his retirement and will serve again as a retired member on that. Effective yesterday, May 3rd, 2015, he retired from the Morton police officer. Again, it was with great honor and sadness that I would like to recognize him today. I ask you all to join me in that recognition. Patrick? We're giving him a plaque for his 30 years of service along with a retired credentials, ID, and badge.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you.
As mentioned, you're still on the police pension board. Now you can watch your own pension.
Exactly. I think the other pensioners are much more happy about that. Thank you very much. It's been an honor to serve. I appreciate everyone's, the community at large, the respect you get, and the cooperation that we have is tremendous. And I appreciate the efforts of all those. I came into this occupation thinking it the most noble of endeavors. I walk out knowing that it has been. It's been great, and I've enjoyed it. The challenges that this department and all departments are going to have in the future are just incredible. And I wish them well. They certainly have my support, as you folks do. I certainly want you to continue the good effort, and I will always be there as I can, however I can. Thank you.
Thanks. We appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to request removal of an item from the consent agenda? Today's consent agenda contains minutes of the April 20 meeting and bills. There being none, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved, Your Honor. Newhouse, second by Kaufman. Any discussion? Call it, please. Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
I have two items. Last week, we passed a resolution recognizing the 7th grade girls volleyball team. This resolution tonight recognizes the 7th grade girls basketball team for their state championship in the IESA tournament. The team coach is Don Swearingen. Is he here tonight? All right. Can I ask the team to stand? All right. Okay. Could I have a motion to approve their resolution anyway?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second. Second by Belsley. Call it. Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
They have such an impressive list of accomplishments. I think it might be kind of neat to read. Yeah, why don't you read them?
Okay. The MHS golf team that we're recognizing them tonight. Well, I'm just going to read the whole thing here. Whereas the 2014 Morton High School Boys Golf Team conducted a memorable season by winning the IHSA Class Two Way Golf Tournament in the state of Illinois, and whereas Tommy Cool captured the individual state championship, and whereas the MHS Golf Team has exhibited a great degree of dedication and commitment to excellence to achieve the outstanding results accomplished during the season, which include the following: winner of the Metamora Invitational, winner of the Dunlap Shootout, winner of the Canton Invitational, winner of the Monmouth Invitational, compiling a regular season record of 15-1 in dual matches, Mid-Allianti Conference Champions, including a 7-0 conference record, IHSA Class Two Way State Champions, and IHSA Individual Class Two Way State Champion, Tommy Cool. Whereas the MHS Golf Team displayed a high level of sportsmanship while competing in the state tournament, and whereas the members of the MHS Golf Team are as follows: Adam Christensen, Isaac Ingold, Pete Cool, Tommy Cool, Trevor Tompkins, Jack Cern. And whereas the Morton High School Golf Team was coached by the following: Jamie King, head coach, Jake Tierney, assistant coach. And whereas the President Village Board of Trustees desired to recognize, on behalf of all citizens of Morton, their appreciation and respect for the accomplishments of the golf team, and the way the team members conducted themselves as representatives of Morton. Now therefore be it resolved by the President and Board of Trustees the following: that the foregoing recitals are hereby incorporated as part of this resolution. This resolution may be spread upon the corporate records of the village of Morton. That a certified copy of this resolution be presented to each member of the team and each coach. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval and pass the state. So congratulations. That is such an impressive list of accomplishments. I congratulate all of you. Thank you.
You can sit now if you'd like. Although, Tommy, would you raise your hand?
Yes.
I just wanted you to know that the number of strokes you take for 18 holes, that's what I do for nine. Motion has been made. Second by Sam. Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
And lastly, and this will be the last, asking for approval to transfer $5,506.79 from the Capital Projects Fund. This is the remaining balance of cash in the fund. As we've discussed before, the auditors would like us to eliminate this. So it will be transferred as follows: $3,579.41 will go to the General Fund; $1,431.77 will go to the Water Depreciation Fund; and $495.61 will go to the Storm Water Depreciation Fund.
So moved. Second. Kaufman.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
The second of which is asking for approval to transfer $109,582.00 from the Capital Projects Fund to the Water Depreciation Fund. This amount is the reimbursement that we received from the school district for work done on the bus garage in 2014, but the funds were received in this current fiscal year. And these costs were covered by transfers from the water depreciation time at the time they were paid.
So moved, Your Honor. Second. Second by Sam. Any discussion? Call a question, please. Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
And lastly, and this will be the last, asking for approval to transfer $5,506.79 from the Capital Projects Fund. This is the remaining balance of cash in the fund. As we've discussed before, the auditors would like us to eliminate this. So it will be transferred as follows: $3,579.41 will go to the General Fund; $1,431.77 will go to the Water Depreciation Fund; and $495.61 will go to the Storm Water Depreciation Fund.
So moved. Second. Kaufman. And Hare. Discussion? Call it, please. Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Nothing's not, Your Honor. Thank you.
Trustee Kaufman.
Nothing tonight either.
On this last one, I'd like a drum roll, please. Trustee Newhouse.
Oh, you might know, Your Honor, that in my last meeting before I end my term of service, I have a list. In your package, ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain property. This is ordinance 1438. It is the site at Detroit and Jefferson where the Casey's subdivision will go on the corner. It moves the zoning from I-2 to B-3. This is a benefit to the community. It makes it consistent with properties on the adjacent corners and will allow for continued business development on that corner. Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call it, please. Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes. I also notice, Your Honor, that I skipped the first one accidentally. That is consideration of a Tazewell County zoning case. It's in your package. Review it if you want, but this is another one from the county where it is related to basically agricultural land or suburban land. It's relevant because it's within our one and a half mile zone, but it has no implication for the village of Morton and no action is required on our part. So that moves us to ordinance 14-39. That is the mixed-use ordinance, which had further treatment. I think you will remember, and citizens of Morton will remember, that we passed the mixed-use ordinance under extensive review by the Plan Commissioner recommendation. Almost immediately upon its passage, we had interest and investment in downtown Morton. And as preliminary plans were drawn and discussions emerged, we discovered that there were a couple of issues that needed further treatment, basically related to setback. These are the safety sight lines at the corners. And I want to recognize Mr. Spangler had done a lot of work on this along with the Plan Commission, but particularly on his own to help get this resolved. And there's also a stormwater consideration. It is simply identified as required consistent with other village ordinance. So that should put us in a position to proceed with downtown development, and I therefore move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Call it, please. Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
A couple of informational items, Your Honor. We have discussed from time to time the resolution of the old Restmore property. And as my last report on that subject, I am pleased to say that I have discussed the project with Miller Valentine, the people that are taking it on. They are poised to proceed. The state funding that was originally allocated has been held up under the Rowner government, but alternative funding has been identified and pending approval, which they expect about mid-May or expect action. They don't necessarily expect approval, although they're cautiously optimistic. But pending approval in mid-May, then the property should close and the work should proceed. So it is not guaranteed, but the Miller Valentine Management Group still intends to complete the project, assuming that they have a governmental partner. And that's typically the way these things work. There's a government component. So I will join them in being cautiously optimistic. We have worked hard to try to facilitate the resolution of that property. I know the neighbors are all concerned. I will go out of office hoping that all the work we put into it will be fruitful. Last item, if you haven't done it yet. Join me in making a pledge to the plaza. We're bearing down on the full amount. I think there's about $100,000 to go. There are a number of opportunities to do this, and there will be a funding drive beginning probably about mid-year, but in the meantime, they will happily take your contribution. And if you want to find out more about it, you can stop by the Chamber Office, the Economic Development Council Office, and be informed and have the opportunity to make your pledge, or you can do it online. And that, sir, is, I think, the end of my discussion for tonight. And henceforth.
I would entertain a motion to go signee die.
So moved. Second.
Go ahead, sir. Just go do these?
Yes.
Trustee Belsley.
Yes.
Raise your right hand, please. And repeat after me. I, Randy Belsley.
I, Randy Belsley.
Having been elected to the position of village trustee.
Having been elected to the position of village trustee.
For the village of Morton, county of Tazewell, state of Illinois.
For the village of Morton, Tazewell County, state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of village trustee to the best of my ability.
Of village trustee to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Mr. Blunier. Raise your right hand. I, Rod Blunier.
I, Rod Blunier.
Having been elected to the position.
Having been elected to this position.
Of village trustee.
Of village trustee.
For the village of Morton, county of Tazewell, state of Illinois.
For the village of Morton, county of Tazewell, state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Well. I have a couple of items. Okay. I don't think we need to remove everybody. Let's just, yeah. And we'll relocate Rod later. Yeah. You did it.
Congratulations.
I would like to recommend to this board Resolution Number 1-15, a resolution to recognize the service of trustee Newhouse. Could I get a motion? Second by Dobbs. Dobbs is second. Kaufman is first. I have free you, just a very small measure of our respect. And I will read this. It speaks more, I think, than the resolution. With deepest appreciation of his fellow board members and the citizens for over 28 years of outstanding service and leadership to the village of Morton, and enlisted Planning Commission from '81 to '96, and 2001 to 2007, and served on this board from 2007 to 2015. And I will add my personal note to this. This may surprise some people, but I have come to depend on trustee Newhouse for many things, and I'm going to miss this council.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Before I ask you to say a few words, I have another plaque.
Okay.
This plaque is presented to Olinda B. Newhouse with sincere appreciation for the many years you shared your husband with the village of Morton. Would you present this to her tonight?
I shall, and I will extend her deep thanks to all of you and point out that she would be quick to say that she is nothing other than what the spouses of all other serving men and women in the village have done. Thank you very much.
Hare, would you say a few words?
There is no higher honor, in my estimation, than to have the confidence of your friends and neighbors and peers, and to serve those people in government. I've been extremely proud to represent Morton over the years, first on the Plan Commission and then as a trustee. And I think we've done good work. I hope history will show that we have done good work for the village, but it has been an honor to serve, a privilege. I remind Morton citizens that we have among the best governments in the state, if not the best government in the state, any city our size, or probably any city, period. And the talent is deep, and ethical, and competent, and I walk away knowing that the welfare of the village is in good hands. Thank you.
Would you call the, we had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote for the resolution? Okay. Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And I must say, before I leave, congratulations to Rod Blunier. I'm very pleased that he's succeeding me on the Board of Trustees, and he's going to be an outstanding trustee. So again, I walk away knowing that the government is in good hands.
Hold on, Steve. We've got, you're not done yet.
I'd like to make a comment about Steve. I have a sister who's on the city council in a southern Illinois city, and she went to IML conference and signed up for a class, at which the presenter failed to show up. Trustee New-
And I must say, before I leave, congratulations to Rod Blunier. I'm very pleased that he's succeeding me on the Board of Trustees, and he's going to be an outstanding trustee. So again, I walk away knowing that the government is in good hands.
Hold on, Steve, we've got, you're not done yet.
I'd like to make a comment about Steve. I have a sister who's on the city council in a southern Illinois city, and she went to IML Conference and signed up for a class, at which the presenter failed to show up. Trustee Newhouse took charge of that class, and she said it was the most informative class she went to while she was at that conference.
And Steve, just real quick, I wanted to say that it's been a few short years for me, being involved, but you've been a tremendous resource and a great mentor. You embody everything that a public servant should be. You've served with honesty, integrity, and it's just been incredibly appreciative from my part, the friend and the resource that you've been, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. It's been my privilege.
I'd also like to say a personal thanks, I've sat by you by several years, do not really know you very good, Steve, when you took off, if somebody told me you're tough. You are. Both of us are very opinionated, and when we did the wage contract, I asked Mayor Dierfling if Steve could help. That was an experience. We got rid of Morton's blowing garbage, and we have auto pay because of this man. He demanded in the negotiations, that was an experience.
Garbage contract.
Yep. And then we did the wage study and several others, and what the audience and TV didn't catch several times is, I'd tell him what I was going to say, and he'd remind me to say something else, and we'd be pointing at something, and I'd say, "You take care of that." And I don't know of any time that it actually caught the camera, but Steve cleaned up many of my messes on TV, so thank you.
Again, my pleasure and my privilege.
We're going to miss you, Steve.
Thank you.
Steve, if I may, I am really going to miss you. I have enjoyed tremendously working with you. When I was representing the village on the Plan Commission, it's kind of when we first got to know each other, and then now as fellow trustees, and you are a fantastic resource. You brought so much to this board. And, agree or disagree, you were always such a gentleman. We remain friends, and I hope we always do. Have a lot of respect for you.
Thank you. I appreciate it a great deal.
Last, but, Steve, I wanted to add my thoughts as well, is, I've worked with you for a few years on the, as a trustee on the village board, and actually on the other end of things, when you started out on the Planning Commission. So we've worked together over the years, and I've always appreciated your service. Knowing the nature of your work ethic, I know that the time you'll get back from these Monday nights that you won't be at a board meeting, I don't see you sitting idle. So whatever endeavors you take up, I wish you well, and best wishes for the future.
Thank you. Thank you all. And thanks to the citizens of Morton.
I wanted to say one thing about Steve.
If I could.
Steve, you, I've only known you a couple of weeks, and you took me under your wing, and you've taught me a lot about how to do this job with integrity, and honesty, and accountability. And you've never once asked me what I stand for. You just accepted me, and told me to do a good job, and you have a lot of confidence. That means a lot. So I've got big shoes to fill, so with the support of my beautiful wife in the back, Teresa, I think we can begin the process, but don't expect a lot right up front.
I don't think we'll have any difficulty.
Thank you. This is also the time, because we've got a change in officers, to reassign some of the trustees to different responsibilities. Ordinance 156 states that members of the Board of Trustees may be assigned such duties and responsibilities by the village president, as the village president shall deem necessary and desirable from time to time, and of course, that's with the board's approval. I've identified 12 current issues that I certainly need some help, and the city needs to make sure someone's keeping an eye on this. In brief, they are, tourism takes in about $300,000 a year, and someone needs to be monitoring that, so the board knows how to react. We've got paramedic union negotiations, we have police union negotiations this year. We have a water treatment plant, very significant changes. We have insignificant improvements in the waste treatment, and the street department has all kinds of construction that's going to move forward this year. We've got franchise agreements that need to be monitored. Even stormwater is going to see a major project this year. And of course, as mentioned by trustee Newhouse, we're going to start on the plaza. We're also working on emergency preparations, so that the city can secure a ready-to-respond designation from the state. We're buying major equipment on a regular basis, and in terms of finance, while I'm pleased that we finally got a governor in the state who's trying to address costs, if he does what he says he's going to do, it could cost Morton $800,000, and so we have to make some arrangements to deal with that. Now, I've made a, you can go online and see all of these documents, but as I look at each of the trustees, they all have so many talents, it's almost kind of hard to decide who should be doing what. And I, as I went through them, I saw trustee Belsley has spent years in economic development. He was with the Peoria Economic Development Commission, responsible for Tazewell County for many years. Trustee Blunier is a very senior marketer, and he serves on a government procurement Board of Directors, which is just the kind of expertise we've been looking for. Trustee Dobbs has years of employment contract management, and he's a military veteran. Hare is a contractor and owner of a contracting organization. Herman is an expert in emergency response. And Kaufman, like Hare, is an owner and a contractor here in the city of Morton, so we've got all kinds of talent available. And I would like a motion to approve the list that I have included in the package.
So move.
Moved by Randy, second by Ginger. Any discussion?
Does this include the, this whole package, the entire, all the back pages and everything?
Yeah.
There's one thing that we do need to address, in regards to the Morton Economic Development Council, that I want the minutes to make sure that we reflect that these are, in regards to just the Morton Economic Development Council, this is a nomination, not an appointment. A nomination that is actually subject to the EDC Board and its members, and the rules and, you know, procedures and processes that are guided by the independent bylaws that the EDC has. Also, subject with that, there's actually only one seat that is actually open, and that is the one vacated by trustee Newhouse. So wanted to try to address that.
I appointed about, well, two years ago this month, trustee Hare and trustee Newhouse to the EDC. And now I would like trustee Belsley, who is going to be providing oversight for the planning and zoning, and the fact that he also has many years of experience with EDC, to replace trustee Newhouse. And I frankly wanted to replace trustee Hare myself. He's done two years on the board, and I would like to do the last two years of my term as mayor, of this term as mayor, on the board myself, and work with the new board of the EDC. So if this is approved, then indeed it does become a recommendation to the EDC Board, and I would hope that they would recognize our right to choose our own representatives. Any other comments?
I just have a question, as regards to the, this vacancy for Mr. Newhouse on the Since he is leaving, there's going to be a vacancy there, probably a big vacancy. And I'm wondering if there's been consideration of possibly replacing Mr. Newhouse, and then six months later, looking at maybe another placement, because one change will cause a certain level of disruption, and I wonder if replacing two might, I wonder if it would be the right thing, or would it be better to wait six months to do the second? Just kind of thought I'd throw that out there.
I did give that some consideration, but in view of the fact that the EDC now has a brand-new executive director, who I've met, I think, with about six times now, I would like to get off on a good footing with him, and make sure that the EDC and the village start to work together a lot better than they have in the last year or so.
Do you think we can accomplish this by, let's say, putting you in, in that vacancy? Because I think it's well-known that the mayor being involved in EDC is a wonderful thing, and I really believe that that would be something that would tie the two groups together, and cause probably the least amount of change. Change is difficult sometimes, and maybe it's a good thing, but sometimes difficult, and I think that bringing you on board would add that foundational change that we need, and maybe six months later, we look at additional changes.
It's a thought, but if I had, if the, if the EDC comes back to us and says, "I'm sorry, I won't accept two people," for whatever reason, I've never seen their bylaws, so I really have no idea, then I would prefer that it were trustee Belsley. I think it's very important that the head of the zoning and planning be on that group. My participation would be secondary to his. So if they come back and say, "I'm sorry, we're not interested," then I would stand down.
Could I ask, Mr. Davies, is, from a legality perspective, how does this look? I don't really understand the process. Can, what can be done, what has to be done, I just don't know. I just want to make sure I understand.
The process, at this point, as the mayor indicated, he has the right to set forth his recommendations, which he has done in a package form. The board has the right to vote those up or down. If the board votes yes, then the question would be addressed with the EDC, which is a separate body. There is no legal document that mandates that they have to accept anything this board does, and they could very well, I believe they take the position that when Mr. Hare was appointed, he had a specific term that lasts until January. That would be a legal issue that had to be sorted out, but they are a separate body, and they do have the right to make their own rules. If you, if the, if the proposal is voted down, then everything's rejected, and everything would, potentially, there wouldn't be any replacement at this time. And there would be no other liaisons, or whatever you want to call them, appointed, because the whole package would have been defeated. It's all or none, the way it's presented. That doesn't mean it can't be changed in the future, but that's all you can vote on tonight.
Any other comments or questions?
I just wonder why we'd want to cause a legal problem with another board, if in fact, his term is a three-year term, and this would cause some legal questions with them. Why should we cause them that problem?
When, I have never seen the bylaws, but what they told me was it's a two-year term. If they reject our appointment, then they reject our appointment. We can replace trustee Newhouse because he has resigned from the board. He could have stayed on himself, I guess, but he's resigned from the board. I gather that trustee Hare is not going to resign from the board, so we would send our recommendations over, and they could decide whether or not they wanted to, well, to accept both of us, or just one of us. I would guess, since the citizens of Morton have given the EDC $384,000, and that they're going to want a lot more, that they would be interested in what we had to say. But if they're not, they're not.
Wouldn't, I just feel like maybe they would separate the funds from the issue at hand. I just, I just, I just don't really understand why we're replacing Sam on the, on the board, I guess, when he has a remainder of his term. I was just affirmed in to try to make a decision independently for the benefit of all, and I feel like, honestly, with all due respect, I respect everything that you're doing, Mr. Mayor, I just don't know if, if we, if we wouldn't be better off to team up with them, and give them an individual, an upstanding individual like Mr. Belsley, or yourself, and say, "Let's do this in the interim, and then in six months, let's see if you really like our appointee, and we can do better than Sam does on the board, then let's move forward with it." But I don't know that they're unhappy right now.
One thing I would point out, though, it's not a question of doing better than Sam, Sam's done a great job.
Okay.
It's a question of, I'd like to work with the EDC for a couple of years myself. I have two years left in my term, and I would like to do a two-year piece. I've never seen, I've tried to get a hold of copies of the bylaws, I've never been able to get them. I don't know what the rules really are.
Your honor, oh.
Go ahead, please, Ginger.
A similar situation exists on another appointment here, the Peoria Area Convention Visitors Bureau, which Rod will be replacing me. And my term there would end at the end of the year. They operate on a calendar year, and not the same, you know, we don't get our new assignments. So by their bylaws, I am on that board until the end of the year. However, we work that out, that they understand. It's not about an individual and an individual's assignment, it's about someone representing the village on their board. And, you know, that gets worked out between the parties. I really think that if it's looked at as an individual's assignment, I think that's not exactly the perspective. I think it is part of our assignment and our duties, and we rotate, and we do, traditionally, it's been in May, when we accept our new assignments. And my accepting my new assignments, and Rod accepting his new assignments, will cause the same issue on a board. And we just work it out.
Well, we're going to have to work with these boards on a continuing basis, don't you think it'd be better if we kind of talked to them before we did anything? And found out what the protocol was?
But, see, the protocol, that's two separate things. The PACPB didn't call us and say, "Okay, now this is our protocol. We won't accept, or we will accept, or this, or that." It's two separate organizations, and we have a working relationship that's not about, it should not be about individuals, in my opinion.
If, if indeed, the, I'm old-fashioned, and if we send this proposal over to the EDC, and they say, "We'd rather have Sam than the mayor," that's fine with me, I don't like to go where I'm not invited.
That's really not the point at all, I hope you understand. It's about what, what's currently being done at the EDC. Maybe they need the additional six months to complete what they're doing, and tend to wind down and get ready for somebody new. And perhaps you go in instead of Mr. Belsley, but I think one of us on that board is a wonderful thing, but I'd hate to see us interrupt the flow that they have by bringing in two individuals, which just creates a lot of change. I'm on a number of boards, as you know, and change creates distraction. Sometimes it's a good distraction, sometimes it may not be.
I'm not sure how the rotation works on that board, but I'm guessing that more than two people turn over, terms end, and stagger around. So I don't view that as disruptive. It's an established board, we have an established working relationship, and I don't want to be disrespectful to anyone, but I do feel like if we would vote no on this, we would be declining our own assignments, and I don't think that's why we're here. We're here to work for the village.
Does anyone have anything else?
Call a question.
Dobbs?
No.
Hare?
No.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
No.
Belsley?
Yes.
Blunier?
No.
The motion fails. That means I have a lot of work to do, because now none of you have any assignments of any Could I have a motion to go to closed session, please?
So move.
Second? Second by Belsley. I will alert the press that I do not think that there's going to be any kind of a decision on this, but if by some reason or other we do decide to reconvene and make a decision, I'll call you all this evening.
I need to have a vote on this.
Oh, okay.
Hare?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
And we just work it out.
Well, we're going to have to work with these boards on a continuing basis. Don't you think it'd be better if we kind of talked to them before we did anything? And found out what the protocol was?
But see, the protocol, that's two separate things. The PACVB didn't call us and say, "Okay, now this is our protocol. We won't accept, or we will accept, or this or that." It's two separate organizations, and we have a working relationship that's not about -- it should not be about individuals, in my opinion.
If indeed the -- I'm old-fashioned, and if we send this proposal over to the EDC and they say, "We'd rather have Sam than the mayor," that's fine with me. I don't like to go where I'm not invited.
That's really not the point at all. I hope you understand. It's about what's currently being done at the EDC. Maybe they need the additional six months to complete what they're doing and tend to wind down and get ready for somebody new. And perhaps you go in instead of Mr. Belsley, but I think one of us on that board is a wonderful thing. But I'd hate to see us interrupt the flow that they have by bringing in two individuals, which just creates a lot of change. I'm on a number of boards, as you know, and change creates distraction. Sometimes it's a good distraction, sometimes it may not be.
I'm not sure how the rotation works on that board, but I'm guessing that more than two people turn over, terms end, and stagger around. So I don't view that as disruptive. It's an established board. We have an established working relationship. And I don't want to be disrespectful to anyone, but I do feel like if we would vote no on this, we would be declining our own assignments. And I don't think that's why we're here. We're here to work for the village.
Does anyone have anything else?
Call a question.
Dobbs?
No.
Hare?
No.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
No.
Belsley?
Yes.
Blunier?
No.
The motion fails. That means I have a lot of work to do because now none of you have any assignments of any Could I have a motion to go to closed session, please?
So move.
Second. Second by Belsley. I will alert the press that I do not think that there's going to be any kind of a decision on this, but if by some reason or other we do decide to reconvene and make a decision, I'll call you all this evening.
I need to add a vote on this.
I know.
Hare?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Dobbs?
Yes.
We're in closed session.